I'd like to call this March 26th meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Mugler?
Here. Let the record show that all of our board members are in attendance for tonight's meeting along with our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, and our division superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett, as well. We have with us our student liaison, Ms. Jeray Bolton, and at this time I'll turn things over to her.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Eric Ames, a 5th grade student at Booker Elementary School. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Eric Ames. I'm a 5th grade student at Booker Elementary School. In Language Arts, we have been studying poetry. Tonight, I will read a poem in the form of a couplet. It is called "Aetions" by Sheldon Silverstein. If we meet and I say hi, that's a salutation. If you ask me how I feel, that's a consideration. If we stop and talk awhile, that's a conversation. If we understand each other, that's a communication. If we argue, scream, and fight, that's an altercation. If later we apologize, that's reconciliation. If we help each other home, that's a cooperation. And all these actions added up make civilization. And if I say this is a wonderful poem, is that an exaggeration?
Great job, Eric. Well, while you're here, we'd like to take some time to get to know you better. So, do you have a favorite subject in school?
Yes, ma'am, math.
And what do you like about math?
It's just easy and it's fun to me.
Do you know what you want to be when you grow up?
Yes, ma'am, a professional baseball player.
Oh, wow. So, what's your favorite baseball team?
I really don't have one.
Well, would you like to introduce the family and people from your school that you have with you tonight?
Yes, ma'am. I have my grandma and my grandpa, my dad, my mom, my niece, my cousin, my cousin, my sister, my principal, and my teacher.
Wow. Well, we thank you once again for sharing your poem with us, and we thank all of your support for coming out. We know it means a lot to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And no, I do not think it was an exaggeration. It was a wonderful poem. Couplet, as you educated us all tonight, that that was a couplet. Thank you so much for coming tonight. You look so handsome. Do you dress like that for school every day? Well, if you came into my classroom looking like that, I would give you the benefit of the doubt. You look super. Thanks for looking so professional for us tonight. And thank you to your parents for bringing you out tonight. We appreciate you being here. At this time, we'll move on to our recognitions, and I'll call on Mrs. Diana Galata, our Executive Director of Marketing and Public Relations, and she'll be assisted tonight by school board member, Mr. Butch Harper.
Good evening. It's my pleasure this evening to recognize Morgan Sutherland, who is a junior at Kickitane High School. Morgan earned a chair in the Carnegie Hall Honor Band. After being recommended by her band director, Mr. Nick Conti, she auditioned with 150 students from across the country and earned a chair in the percussion section. And you all may remember, if you watch us on television, or if you were here a couple meetings ago, you played for us last time, right? So, many of us have already heard how great she is. And I'm going to share with you something that she wrote about her experience. So, these are from her, these are her words. "After being nominated by Mr. Conti for the High School Honors Performance Series, I began preparing my audition repertoire. By the 1st of October, I had submitted my recording and started the most nerve-wracking part of the audition process, waiting for results. After a few long weeks, I was relieved and ecstatic to receive an acceptance letter, and I began planning my trip to New York City. My five days there included seven hours of rehearsal per day and visits to Central Park, Times Square, and Rockefeller Center when we had the chance." I'd like to know when you had the chance to do that, if you were rehearsing all day. "I didn't fully realize what it meant to be in the program until I stood on the stage of Carnegie Hall. Performing there was incredible and almost overwhelming. It was fantastic to be able to share the opportunity with students from around the country and from around the world. Performing at Carnegie Hall is an experience I'm so thankful to have had, and I'll remember it and the wonderful friends I made there for the rest of my life." Morgan plans on attending the University of North Texas in Denton, Texas, right? So, congratulations to you, and I'm going to let our school board member, Mr. Harper, present you. Say a few words.
It's pretty obvious. Hampton City Schools is not only known for academics as well as athletics, but also the arts. And as the guy that played in the high school band at Phoenix from 7th grade through the 12th grade, I can appreciate the dedication, although I wasn't that serious about mine, although I've been standing here, the dedication that students like this young lady exhibit. Morgan, it says, "The Hampton City School Board congratulates you, Morgan Sutherland, Kickitane High School, Regional Orchestra, All-State Qualified, and Carnegie Hall Honor Band." And it's signed by our chairman, Martha Mugler, and our superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett. It's here for, as she's performing.
Thank you. Do you have any family or school personnel with you that we might want to ask to stand or clap for?
My mom's right over there, and my principal, Mr. Haynes, my band director, Mr. Conti, and Mr. Deek.
Joshua, come on up. Joshua McQueen is a junior in the International Baccalaureate Program at Hampton High School, and he earned placement as a delegate in the Virginia All-State Chorus. This is the highest individual achievement a student musician can earn in our state. He first earned placement in the All-District Chorus. Through a second audition, he earned the second highest score in the district and was chosen as one of only two delegates for his voice part. He is currently taking private voice lessons and plans to major in music on the college level. Congratulations.
Josh, you certainly have a future in music, but as a delegate, you might be sitting up here one day as a government person. Your future's wide open, man. Hampton City Schools, City School Board congratulates Joshua McQueen, Hampton High School, All-State Chorus.
I would like to thank my mom and dad for bringing me here. Really appreciate it. I see Dr. Grove here, my principal. Hello. I see Mr. Harris and Ms. Gonzalez, both my teachers, amazing teachers. Mr. Shen, I don't know if he's here, but I would like to thank him also for putting me in the music program. And I would like to thank Ms. Bell, my vocal teacher, and also Ms. Jerry. She's up in the heavens, but she definitely, she's a definitely big impact on my life. Thank you.
The rest of our recognitions tonight are student athletes, so it's now my pleasure to introduce Beth Mayer, Coordinator of Athletics and Driver's Education, who will recognize our athletes.
Good evening. We begin tonight with the members of the girls' Bethel Indoor Track Team. The girls are coached by Eddie Williams. Ladies and coaches, would you please come on up? As they're making their way up, we have some individual and relay honors to present. School board member, Mr. Harper, will read off the names and the accomplishments of each certificate, and when he does, please come forward and grab, and receive it.
All right. I can't go without saying that some of the misconceptions about our students in our Hampton City Schools are incorrect. These are not the exceptions, but this is the rule here. We have good students who perform over and above their normal class load, and this is what they achieve right here. Let me read this. "The Hampton City School Board congratulates Nehemiah Lookford, whose mother is the director over there at Bridgeport, Duffel High School Indoor Track Team, coached by Coach Eddie Williams, Conference II Champion in the Boys Triple Jump." Give it up, boy.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my mom and dad, my head coach, and all of my coaches. I especially like to thank my team for their support. Thank you.
Jamie Thomas, raise thy hand. She gets two. Did it so nice, she did it twice. Again, the Hampton City School Board congratulates Jamie Thomas, Bethel High School Indoor Track Team, coached by Eddie Williams. She's the Conference II Champion in the Girls Triple Jump, three times. Also, we congratulate her again, Jamie Thomas, Bethel High School Indoor Track Team, again coached by Coach Eddie Williams. She's the Conference II Champion in the Girls Long Jump. This is jumping sister here, y'all. You didn't want to say her name, did you, Jamie? You do your talking on the track. Mariah Burrell, come on down. Again, the Hampton City School Board congratulates you, Mariah Burrell, Duffel High School Indoor Track Team, Conference II Champion in the 500-meter dash. Now, we do this. Saleem Brown, I said it right, bro? Don't I know you? Give me $20, don't you? Again, the Hampton City School Board congratulates Saleem Brown, Duffel High School Track Team, Indoor Track Team, coached by Eddie Williams again. He's the Conference II Champion in the 500-meter dash. If any of you guys want to say something, I'll allow Nehemiah to say, but if you guys want to say something, you know, feel free. Look at the triple jumper. She wanted to jump out of here right now. 4x800 Girls Relay Team. Got to be four, y'all. Bethel High School, again, Indoor Track Team, coached by Eddie Williams. This is the Conference II Champion, Kayla Bullock. Ashana, Gales Wood. Did I say your name right? Say it again. Very important. No, it is. Don't let anybody pronounce your name wrong. You correct them. Amari Heavens, and also Ashley Greenlee. Congratulations, ladies. Okay, the 4x200 Girls Relay Team. Mariah Burrell, Jamie Thomas, Kayla. What's that? Kayla Scott, what's up, girl? Ms. Gales Wood. I ain't going to try that first name again, dear. You know what I'm talking about. Congratulations, ladies, on your 4x200 showing. Here's your certificate. Okay, 4x400 Girls Relay Team. That consists of Jamie Thomas, you're right, Jamie, Sierra Crippen, Amari Heavens, and Asha... Did I say your name right? Is it Heavens?
Yes.
Okay, everybody laughing like I was on Comic View or something. Ashiana. Ashyan. Ashiana. Ashiana, Gales Wood. I'm sorry, dear. Congratulations on the 4x400 Girls Relay Team, guys. Here you go. 4x400 Boys Relay Team. That is Carlos Young. Those are Carlos Young, Saleem Brown, Dewan Cox, and Antonio Killerbrood. Congratulations, guys.
Good afternoon, everybody. Even though our two fellow track teams ain't here, they couldn't make it, but I'm pretty sure they'll be glad to see this award when we come back. And we work hard. I would like to thank Coach Eddie, our teammates, and our relay coach, Coach Gaines, even though she can't make it either. She really dragged us to make sure we reached this goal, or if not even higher, for outdoor season and indoor season. So, I appreciate this award, and Carlos is too, and the other two.
If somebody were to add up all the scholarships that Coach Eddie Williams has been able to provide for his track teams over the year, you had to turn the page over. He's done a tremendous job. People like him are invaluable to our system because they produce these kind of athletes. Let's give them one more round of applause.
If we could, of the parents of fine young men and women, would you please stand and be recognized? The parents, please stand. Thank you. Thank you. And also, Mr. Saunders, thank you for being here, the principal at Bethel High School. Our next recognitions are from Hampton High School, the Boys Indoor Track Team. Unfortunately, the boys could not be here tonight, but we would like to just say Antoine Moore and Abdul Ellis, they were both a Conference 10 Champion. Antoine was the champion in the triple jump, and Abdul was the champion in the 55-meter hurdles. So, just want to make sure that we said congrats. Finally, tonight, we'd like to honor the Kickitane High School Boys Swim Team. The team is coached by Joey Stickle. Would you please come on up to the stage? The boys team finished the year as Conference II Champions. Congratulations.
You know, for me, this is the best part of school board meeting. All that budget stuff and all that finance and this and that, but this is the real crux of what we do. This is why we're here, because these kids represent us, and I've learned one thing in working with kids over the year, that's keep it real. Keep all the garbage out, keep all the BS out, keep it real. Right here. Right, buddy? Yeah, boy. The Hampton School, Hampton City School Board congratulates the Kickitane High School Boys Swim Team, Coach Joey Stickle, Conference II Swim, Conference II Swim Championship. Congratulations, people.
We have one relay team and one individual that we would also like to honor. I'll have Mr. Harper read those.
Okay, this is congratulations to the Kickitane High School 400-yard Relay Team, again Coach Joey Stickle, Conference II Champions, Zach MacCuberacus. Did I say that right?
Yeah, you did.
First time. Roll them out. Tyler Ducar. Tucker Lynn, Josh Duke. Josh, what up, Duke? Here you go. Give me some of that. Give him one. Zach, got another one for you, buddy. Kickitane High School Swim Team, Conference II Champion in the 100-yard butterfly.
All right. Appreciate the opportunity to come out here tonight and let my boys be recognized. We had a very good year. Not only were we the conference champion at the championship meet, but our boys went undefeated this year. Also, just wanted to mention a few. We had three of our swimmers and two divers make it to the state championship meet this year. Zach MacCuberacus, Josh Duke, and Tucker Lynn, who couldn't be here tonight. And I wanted to mention the divers because it was only like three years ago that Hampton, the school board here, allowed us to put diving back into our system, and for the first time in a very long time, because I can't remember when diving was taken out, Hampton City Schools had two divers representing Hampton City Schools, and they both happened to be from Kickitane, and that was Zach Steffen and Victoria Hill. Now, one last thing, and I don't want to take up too much time, just to, you know, I couldn't do any of this. You might be wondering, this is my assistant coach, happens to be also my sister, Melissa Smith. She helps out quite a bit. And of course, we couldn't do this without everybody's support from the school board, our principal, Raymond Haynes, Athletic Director, Lee Martin, and of course, all our parents. And if y'all want to stand and just be recognized, go ahead. I appreciate everybody's help for another successful year. Good night.
Thanks, guys. When I get caught on Titanic, I'm going to use one of y'all. Let me just say one quick thing. We have a misnomer. We've been calling him Mr. Hayes. His name is actually Dr. Hayes. Could you stand up, Dr. Hayes? He's already standing up.
This concludes our recognitions for tonight. Just a word of congratulations again to all of our student musicians and student athletes, and we thank you all so much for coming out tonight and giving us the opportunity to give you a little extra recognition. Without objection, we'll stand in recess for five minutes. Okay, we'll begin again and pick back up now with the hearing of any delegations, presentation of any written communications or petitions, and I will ask our clerk, Carolyn Bowers, to present the protocol.
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Ricky Johnston.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Johnston.
My name is Ricky Johnston. I have been a valued employee of Hampton City Schools for 13-plus years and hope to be for many more, along with the rest of the AC department. My job description is as follows. I'm a steam fitter, pipe fitter, plumber, HVAC technician. In a nutshell, I take care of all mechanical piping systems in the schools that use water for heating and cooling, plumbing issues, and I'm now learning the technical side, electrical and controls on the air conditioning. Never too old to learn, I guess. At least, that's what Alex told me. Before he goes, a proposal to outsource the HVAC department. My supervisor, Alex Robbins, has spoken on this matter, as well as given you some paperwork on this issue. I hope you have read them. What concerns many of us is how this decision came about. Who was this contractor? We still have not met with anyone other than Mrs. Robin Ruth and Mr. Tom Sawyer. How will it be funded? Who will be benefiting from this? And lastly, why? The savings that have been mentioned are $274,000. But what is the overall cost going to be? Going through the budget after last week's meeting, I found out the cost, almost $5.1 million. This is what I see. Physical year 14 for operations and maintenance. Contract services, $2,280,000. Other charges are zero. Internal services, $6,196,000. Materials, $1,228,000. Total, $9,453,000. Physical year 15, operations and maintenance expenses. Contract services, $7,440,000. Other charges, $6,533,000. Internal services, zero. Materials, $877,000. Total, $14,455,000. A difference of $5.1 million. Please explain this and how this number came about. Also, the maintenance department works under Budget Number 6007. This year's budget was only $606,000. That was for all schools, all shops. Next year's budget drops, $581,000, for the savings of $25,000. Is this savings air conditioning related? Is this savings air conditioning related? But if you look at the budget line 3310, which is for contracted building and ground services, it increases by 732%. This year's amount, $681,000. Next year's amount, $5,670,000. An increase of almost $4.9 million. So, to save $274,000 and $1.9 million for custodians, you are willing to spend almost $5.1 million or more dollars. So with this massive increase in funds to a ghost contractor that has no history with Hampton City Schools, is this justified? Take this money and invest it back into our house, our employees, and most of all, our kids. Thank you very much. You have both.
Our next speaker is Terri Shepherd.
Hello, board members. My name is Terri Shepherd. I live in Chesapeake, Virginia. I commute to Hampton City Schools every day, back and forth for my employment. I'm up here. I guess you guys know why I'm up here. Thirteen months ago, I stood right here, looked at everybody. I was presented the Double Dove Award standing right there on that little box. Now, thirteen months later, here to defend my job, along with the rest of my colleagues. Okay, I would like to take this opportunity to address the board members and Dr. Shiflett, and thank you guys on several concerns and issues that we have. Okay, I'm speaking on the behalf of ten HVAC shop employees and the custodial force slated to be eliminated from Hampton City Schools due to budget cuts. I have several concerns, some you may or may not have thought of. But may I reiterate, the people being eliminated play an important role in the everyday life at Hampton City Schools. I'd like to mention a few things, if I may. Last school year, while the roof was being replaced at Lindsay, thunderstorm rolled in. And blew off the contractor's temporary covering that was on the school roof, flooded the school. Who responded? Custodial staffing and maintenance department personnel came to clean up the mess. We took care of it. On several occasions, members of the HVAC shop have been called to respond immediately to possible fire, smoke, flooding, and heating and cooling systems. I've responded to three of these issues in the past five months myself. One at Langley, one at Eaton, and one at Spratley. Contractors are not going to have the knowledge and resources to make repairs to forty-plus-year-old equipment that is obsolete. Your current repair force has the knowledge and resources and is still willing to make small repairs instead of complete system changeouts, which will involve days, weeks, possible months of equipment downtime in offices and classrooms. Numerous occasions, the custodians respond to help teachers, assistant principals, principals and students move books, classroom items, repair a stuck wheel on a laptop cart, or clean up behind a sick child that has had an accident in the hallway on his way to the clinic. These people are your first responders in an emergency situation. They assist with bus duty, parent drop-offs, and whatever lies in between. Without having in-house knowledge of systems, points of isolation such as water valves, electrical breakers, not having your first responders, a radio or phone call away is gonna be a significant crippling to the mission of Hampton City Schools. Contractors are not going to be your number-one line of defense in an emergency. You will be on their list and pull a number. They'll get to you when they can. A couple of months ago, a tornado demolished a big part of the operations and maintenance office complex. Who responded? Maintenance department, over half of the HVAC shop, or over half of the HVAC department, and the custodial force. Okay, please keep in mind, when your decision is being made on April 2nd, the impact it will have on families, especially the children of those affected. People are struggling, it is, people are struggling, it is, and barely getting, they are barely getting by. Surely, there are other areas that would be less impacted if only considered. I wouldn't want a child being hungry or cold on my behalf. Our motto, "Every child, every day, whatever it takes", that's not gonna apply to us anymore. Thank you, guys.
Our next speaker is Janice Baker.
Good evening, Dr. Shiflett, Mrs. Mugler, and school board. I'm here as a teacher. So I want, I'm gonna have my teacher mode on. So I want you to visualize a scenario. It's winter. The heat breaks down. Oh, no! We can't do a work order. We don't have custodians. We don't have an HVAC service. What do we do? So whoever's in charge calls the company. We'll be there in a couple of days. We have 500 children in our school with no heat. What are we supposed to do? Oh, that's okay. Just put the coats on. They'll be fine. Then they come a couple of days later and they say, you know, we can't do anything on this. It's so old. You're gonna have to get all new equipment, all new air conditioning or heating units. And you know what? We'll do it over spring break. What happens to our children? Another scenario. It is the end of May. We're getting ready for SOLs, one of the most important time in our day as a teacher. This air conditioning's gone. Oh, let's do a work order. Oh, we can't do that. The custodians aren't here anymore. Oh, well, call whoever it is. They come, again, we can't fix it. We have to order new equipment. We'll do it over the summer. What are the kids supposed to do that are getting ready for SOLs? Be in the heat, they're sweating. They're not gonna do well, because you can't do well when you're under stress, when you're hot. They get short-tempered, they pick answers, and believe me, I know from experience, that's what the kids will do. So there goes the accreditation for the schools. So you have to think, every child, every day, whatever it takes, and are these employees that are coming from the company, are they really gonna be scrutinized as far as background checks? Probably not. Are our kids gonna be safe? Isn't that one of our priorities? Safety, every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Ruth Grillo, and following Ms. Grillo will be Eunice Nettles-Pickett.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ruth Grillo, the Director for Academic Advancement and Enrichment. Excel Art is a longstanding part of our programming and services for our gifted and talented students here in Hampton City Schools. Excel Art serves about 135 students in grades three through eight on a yearly basis who are transported to Spratley on a weekly or monthly basis for intense instruction in advanced visual arts. These students make up the varsity team for visual arts. They are extremely talented, quite passionate, and are usually planning careers in the arts and will soon be developing portfolios for art scholarships to support their colleges and career goals. Their talents are such that they do need very specialized art instruction, with opportunities to use professional art equipment, things that Excel Art currently provides. The Excel curriculum is advanced, explicit, and in-depth, and provides these students with extraordinary opportunities to develop their higher-level thinking skills and creativity. That's a primary focus and is a crucial part of Hampton's strategic plan. I have carefully considered the impact of the proposed budget that will eliminate this program and have done a force field mitigation analysis to try to see how the program could still be implemented, but in a different way. But there are critical aspects of this program that cannot be compensated for. First, for our talented middle school students, this is usually the only art program that is available to them, as art electives usually cannot fit into a college-bound schedule. Second, moving from a weekly four hours of purposeful art instruction and Excel studio time on the elementary level to a 45-minute or less resource art time in a regular elementary school would have a catastrophically detrimental impact on the talents and artistic development of these students. The class time and materials just cannot be provided to support them adequately in a regular school environment. Third, the state laws regarding gifted services for gifted students are very clear about making sure that these students have time to work with their academic or artistic peers, as well as with their age and grade level peers. When there are only one or two exceptionally gifted art students in a school, it is indeed difficult to provide that social-emotional support, the support that is gained from looking over another artist's shoulder and saying, wow, what a great idea. I'm gonna try that technique, too. We currently have a gifted elementary artist who is extremely shy, who speaks only in whispers, and who came into the program making incredible and incredibly tiny drawings. Through Excel Art, she's coming out of her shell, both verbally and artistically. As her confidence expands, so do her pictures and her comments. Hampton is becoming quite well-known in the region as being very supportive of gifted students. We frequently have homeschooled and private school students applying for our gifted programs, and these programs do provide a way to bring those students on board. While I am acutely aware of our desperate budget situation, I do respectfully ask that you reconsider your proposed Excel Art cut on behalf of those gifted students who let their artistic lights shine here. In conclusion, I would like you to see two self-portraits drawn recently as part of the Excel portfolio application package. They actually were on my desk this morning. This one was done by a fifth grader. This one was done by a third grader. We can only imagine what their work would look like if they can receive specialized instructional assistance or specialized art instruction in visual arts through Excel Art. I hope you can find a way to give them that chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grillo. Our next speaker is Eunice Nettles-Pickett, and following her will be Frank George. And if your name is called as the next speaker, if you might want to come up and take a seat on the corner there so you can jump up and speak real, as soon as the next speaker or the speaker before you finishes.
Good afternoon, school board members, staff, and parents. My name is Ms. Nettles-Pickett. I am a lead custodian at Spratley Middle School, have been for eleven-plus years. I'm here on behalf of the custodians that couldn't make it tonight, that have, that decide to stay at work and do the job that we are paid to do. On behalf of our maintenance department, we work together as a team. Our jobs are important to us. We are the first responders to school. We open up the buildings. We ensure that the building is clean and ready and safe for our staff and our students. We are a very important support team for the school. We maintain a clean and safe environment for staff and students. We go beyond our call of duty. We take care of our children, the ones that come in early in the morning when the parents, when the parents have to leave for work early, for a meeting, or who didn't listen to the news when it says we are two hours late. We are there for our students. I don't have kids in the Hampton City School systems, but for us, we, but for some of us, we do. However, it takes, you said, whatever it takes. When you drop off your kids, they become our kids. We are responsible for them. Some of us, we are only parents, we are the only parents working. Some of us are custodians. We need these jobs to take care of our families. Depending on the job and the care of our, depend on the jobs and the care of our families. The kids know us by name. They come give us hugs. They say hi to us all through the day. Some of even get in trouble just to say hi and get a hug. They get out of line. That's how important we feel. I even had a student come up to me the other day and give me a flower. It made me feel so good. I almost was in tears for it. Forgot to get the student's name, but her name is Mallory. We are already invested in the school system. But in any case, if you decide to outsource the custodian staff, it should be a stipulation that we would keep our jobs at our pay rate. The company, GCA, when they first came here, they quoted $11 an hour. I see they quoted again, $9.39. Who can work for $9.39? Nobody can live off of $9.39 an hour. Nobody. To me, GCA didn't answer any questions, just like the young lady said a couple of weeks ago. We didn't get the answers we needed. And I don't think, for me, I think that y'all should reconsider outsourcing the custodians. We are very important in these schools. We are the first responders. We are the ones that's there early in the morning. I get to work at 6:30 in the morning. I am the only one there for at least 30 minutes before anybody else come in, which means I'm there by myself in the morning. That's my job. I take my job personally. I take my job seriously, and I thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Frank George, and he will be followed by Christine Woods.
Good evening. I'm Frank George. I'm with the HVAC shop. I've been with it for 20 years. What is heating and air conditioning worth to you guys? Today, we lost four Siemens panels. That was three schools with no heat. Within two hours, we were able to get two elementary schools and a middle, and an elementary school back up. Those rooms, when we got them back up, were running at 60 degrees. By nine o'clock, they were up and running. You gotta understand, we're doing benchmarks now. What would a contractor do? Yeah, work orders were coming in at nine o'clock. If there's a two-hour delay, you're talking about 11. These panels had to be brought up by Siemens. They may have been brought up tomorrow. Were you willing to go a day, two days, without heat? The fourth panel we've got is down. So now we've got two Siemens panels that are failed. We've been requesting for two years for $7,000 to bring one of these panels back up. Now we've lost a second panel. It's gonna cost currently $7,000 to $10,000. After the 1st of April, or 1st of July, when you do away with the HVAC shop, that's gonna cost you $30,000 to $40,000 apiece to get those up. And if these panels fail before we can get, before Siemens can get back in here to fix them, it may be higher than that, because they're gonna have to start from scratch. This equipment is old, very old. Most, most air conditioning equipment usually lasts 15 to 20 years. Most of this equipment is original to the buildings. We talked to our fellow workers. Usually, the first thing they say is, you still got that equipment? And then the next comment comes out with, it still works? We affect everybody in this school system, from you guys in the school, some of the school board, because the air conditioning's running, to the preschoolers, because we affect everybody. The heat and air conditioning affects everyone. The heat and air conditioning affects everyone. In about a month, we will be going into the AC season. We will be receiving somewhere between thirty and forty work orders a day. There's only ten of us, and eight of us are mechanics. Nobody wants to be second. Nobody wants to be hot, and we get hollered at as soon as we walk in the building of, "How long it took? Why did it take you so long to get to my building?" Everybody. SOLs are coming. How well will you do when the buildings are hot and you've got no AC? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Christine Woods, and she'll be followed by Billy Miller, Frank Miller, and Mary Claire Miller.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the board. I'd like to have my fellow National Board Certified teachers stand up at this time, and I'd like to thank them for supporting me. There are also quite a few National Board Certified teachers who have written to you and sent you letters. I just want to tell you a little bit of background information about myself, because I think it gives you a good perspective of who I am and why I am at Kicatan. I went to Smith Elementary. I went to Eaton Middle School. I graduated from Kicatan High School. My husband also graduated from Kicatan. My dad was a Hampton City Councilman and a judge in Hampton. My mom also worked for Hampton City Schools in special ed. So I live in Hampton. I'm pretty much a Hamtonian. I worked in York County for thirteen years before my dream job at Kicatan opened up, and I was tempted to leave York County even though the salary was lower, because Kicatan was my dream job. And I did it, and the reason why was because there was a National Board stipend. And with the stipend, it made up the difference of what I left behind in York County. No matter how much I dreamed of returning to Kicatan, I would not have taken the job if it had not been for the fact that the stipend made up that difference. The reason I'm telling you this is because one of your goals is to attract and retain the best employees. Without the stipend, you will not be able to attract the most qualified teachers compared to the cities around us. Without the stipend, you will cause people like me to consider searching again for employment at other school systems or in other jobs completely. A majority of the National Board Certified teachers at Kicatan, I know for a fact, have also been Teacher of the Year and achieved other awards and brought attention to Hampton City Schools, and they are also in leadership positions, not just in their schools, but, for example, in state and regional positions for organizations. Are these the teachers that you want to feel punished or make them feel as if they need to leave? Another point is that the amount of work done for the certification really is equal to and also more meaningful than getting a master's, because it is focused on student learning. I have a master's in my field. I have a master's in library science, besides just having a teaching certification, and I can speak to that personally. There are very few other ways for teachers to reach a higher level of any kind in their field unless they want to change careers and become an administrator, which is just not for everyone, not for me. I think the bottom line and important point is that you need to focus on attracting and retaining exceptional staff, and you're not going to be able to do this if you cut that stipend. I just looked on my iPad, and I still have the speech from 2012 on this topic. It's very similar, and I think that the National Board stipend should be put in the budget permanently. Stop bringing it up year after year as an option to cut. Hampton City Schools should make a commitment to support National Board Certified teachers in every budget, every year. It is very frustrating that we have to keep talking about this, and it doesn't make us feel very appreciated. I'd like to thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Billy Miller, Frank Miller, and Mary Claire Miller are speaking now, and following them will be, oh my goodness, I hope I don't, Emmalene Lundie.
I polished my glasses. Good evening, everyone. I'm Billy Miller, my husband Frank, and this is our daughter Mary Claire. We would like to first thank you for your dedication and service to our children as active members of the Hampton City School Board. You have the most challenging job and even more daunting task before you with the budget discussions that are before you today. We brought Mary Claire this evening to allow her to begin her role as a self-advocate. As a student in Hampton City Schools, she has a keen interest about the decisions that will affect her academic opportunities and, quite frankly, her safety. We are extremely concerned about the future and potential risks that may come from decreased instructional assistant support. Mary's in fourth grade within Hampton City Schools, and there are great things happening in her room, 208 at Phillips. Our family is very concerned about the budget funding challenges in which Hampton City School System faces and the subsequent impact it will have on her access to critical instructional support provided by the Special Education Department. As concerned voters, homeowners, and, most importantly, proud parents of a student with We urge you to reconsider budget cuts targeted towards and directly affecting the instructional assistant positions in the Special Education Department. The elimination of these instructional assistant positions seriously jeopardizes how her special education services will be implemented in the future and significantly lessens the standards for our daughter's fair and appropriate education. Further, these positions are critical to meeting Mary's education needs outlined in her individualized education plan and are paramount to meet her needs in the future. We have two other children who have gone through Hampton City Schools. My oldest was the first student liaison on the school board. My second is going to George Mason to study, wanting to become a physical therapy, and Mary was his inspiration. What my husband and I want for Mary Claire is an opportunity for her to have a choice in her education. The disabled have an equal right to access to the general education curriculum, but supports are necessary. Inclusion is a great opportunity for her to succeed, but it's not fair for her typically developing peers to adjust their classroom experience to either keep her on track or to organize her notes. To elaborate on how important these instructional assistants are in the development of our children with special needs, I'd like to share some of our personal experiences with you. To begin, her aide is aware that children who have Down Syndrome are highly susceptible to ear infections. The aide has taken Mary Claire to the nurse because of nonverbal signs. Mary has a high tolerance of pain and won't tell you when something hurts, and she simply shuts down. And it's not that she's being difficult or stubborn. She simply doesn't know how to express herself at times. On more than one occasion, those trips to the nurse were worthy because of the physician's confirmation of the diagnosis. Her aide has a wealth of strategies to meet Mary Claire's educational needs. She is always supportive and encouraging. She has joined us at some of Mary's IEP meetings at our request. She has provided keen insight on Mary Claire's abilities and limitations. Further, eliminating instructional assistant positions will indeed affect the dynamics of the learning environment in the classroom. This is the place where the budget cuts should be impacted least. I know I don't have to tell you all how critical Mary's elementary education is to her future development. To ensure that she has afforded an opportunity to be successful in her educational needs and for her to become a productive citizen and a member of our community, a life like ours, we must guarantee that she has provided the necessary education and support structure. We join all of the other families who have children enrolled in Hampton City Schools who receive special education services in stating our objection to these proposed special education position eliminations. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to address the board, to have our voice be heard, and to acknowledge our concerns. Mary Claire, it's your turn.
Need your port to help me get you.
She said, for those of you that didn't quite understand, she said, "I love learning new things," and she said, "I need my support to help me." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emmalene Lundie, and she'll be followed by Greta Harrison.
Good afternoon. My name is Emmalene Lundie, and I'm a parent of a senior at Hampton High School. Go Crabbers! The reason that I'm here is to support the GEAR Up program. Without this program, I don't know where we would be. And I realize from, you know, the talk that the program might be canceled, and even though my son is graduating, I have a son at Spradley, and I do not want this program to go away. It has been so helpful. They do so much for the students. When you have a son, especially a son, a lot of times, you know, you'll ask him, "How did your day go? Good? What happened at school? Nothing." But with GEAR Up, they always send you emails. Sometimes you get three, four, or five emails. You know everything that's going on. So even if your child does not communicate with you, GEAR Up communicates with you. And the kids are so comfortable with this program, because, you know, even though there's guidance, and guidance is great, but this is an area that all kids come together. They feel comfortable. Ms. Cartwright and Ms. Markham, they're the best. It's like having a second parent. So I feel comfortable with this program. They've helped them with field trips, scholarships. My son has scholarships that I would have never known about if it wasn't for the GEAR Up program. So please, I beg of you, please reconsider. This is a very important program. Thank you.
Following Ms. Harrison will be Rebecca Henderson. Good evening.
My name is Greta Harrison. Dear Chairperson Mugler, Dr. Shiflett, and esteemed school board, I usually speak to you as the chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee and a civic leader, but today I'm speaking from the heart as a parent of a child with Down Syndrome, the first one to be included in Hampton City Schools. When my daughter was in third grade many years ago, she left the school building early one day, near the end of the school year. She did not run. She just walked out with her rolling backpack about fifteen minutes early. No one knew she was missing for five to ten minutes. It was by the grace of God and other parents that she was turned around before she was off the campus. She left because she was in a class lacking classroom management skills from the general ed teacher, and she had a subpar one-to-one. She was not trying to be bad. She had just had enough chaos for the day. My daughter is an excellent student. She made honor roll first quarter this year, and she has a stellar work ethic. She is not a runner or a problem student. Words cannot tell you how my heart was racing when I went to pick her up that day and was told by a parent what had happened, even before I got to school. The next day, I made sure all loopholes were filled and proper procedure was in place for her and her IEP. But every day since then, and that's for many years now, my heart moves faster when it comes time to pick her up. I often abruptly have to leave meetings. I worry, is this the day when her one-to-one will be absent? Will there be a sub? I can tell you today was another one of those days. There was a sub I did not know about today. Often, a sub cannot be found. That means a class aide is pulled to be her aide, or she flies solo, which is out of compliance. If there is a sub, will they even know what to do? Even though my daughter is now in sixth grade, has proudly passed an SOL, and knows right from wrong, I have learned to never assume. I worry, and I breathe a sigh of relief every day when I see her face. Recent events have caused me to bring Hampton's situation closer to home. In my daughter's school year, staffing has been cut at all levels in general and special ed, while inclusion classes have been ramped up with little to no training. As my daughter is now in a more complicated environment with many teachers, I worry if she will have enough eyes on her and her classmates in the future. And to be honest, I worry about the quality of those eyes. I worry if contracting our subs will lower the quality of our pool even more. Right now, my daughter has a great one-to-one aide who chooses her sub when possible. I have a great fear that might change. My daughter has three previous aides in her young life. She had three previous aides in her young life, and not a single one had a day of training in Down Syndrome, intellectual disabilities, or inclusion, not one. The only teaching teams she has had with training together were prior to four years ago. I have been lucky, because not all of her teams were extremely intelligent and found ways to do the best they could in their situations, but that was luck and cannot be assumed for the future. So today, I have to say enough is enough. Special education cannot sustain any more cuts while also serving our children properly in various settings. Even our Congress knows this, and they rarely agree on anything, as you know, but that is why they passed a bipartisan spending bill in January of this year, adding five-hundred million dollars to special education funding for this current fiscal year, which runs through September. I have always compromised before, but now, as a mother who's afraid for my daughter's and her classmates' future, I emphatically say, "No more cuts, period." Thank you very much for your time and for all that you do every day for our children.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Henderson, and she'll be followed by Dan McIntosh.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Henderson, and I am supporting the Paul Burbank Elementary Parents. We wanted to come before you and let you know about the IB program, the PYP and NYPD programs here in Hampton. We have been speaking with, I am the president of the PTA at Paul Burbank Elementary, and I'm also very active and a very proud parent of two children at Paul Burbank Elementary, and I'm so happy to have children in Hampton City Schools. The PYP program and NYPD program, which is the IB World program here in Hampton, is an integral part of the total education experience of students at Paul Burbank Elementary. This program is fundamental and enhances the educational development, the academic experience, the personal growth, and the personal development and transferability of our students. This program better prepares Burbank students for the next academic step, especially if that is to go on to an NYPD or DP school in Hampton. In addition, more than thirty-five percent of our students are military students and reserve students who are transferred on a regular basis, and the fact that Hampton City Schools has a PYP and NYPD program is especially important to them and makes a big difference in their choice to have their students in Hampton City Schools, at Burbank Elementary in particular. These students greatly benefit from the principles of the IB curriculum. Paul Burbank Elementary is the only IB elementary school in the Peninsula. It also has the distinction of being the very first IB school in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. Furthermore, the Hampton City Schools is the one and only IB continuum to have the PYP, NYPD, and DP in the entire Tidewater area. That is an amazingly important distinctive that only Hampton City Schools has, and we ask you to fully fund it and continue to fund it within Hampton City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Our next speaker is Dan McIntosh, and he will be followed by Maxine Rice.
Good evening. My name is Dan McIntosh, and I am the president of the Hampton High School PTSA. First, I want to say thank you for what you do. Thank you for your service. Not many people can really appreciate some of the tough decisions that you all are going to have to make, but guess what? That's what we elect you for. And there's also light at the end of this tunnel, because while you're going through what you're doing, you can also make our school system better, and that's why we're all here. I'm the president of Hampton High School PTSA, and I, along with some of our other parents, are here to speak about the GEAR Up program. So we're gonna add something else on your plate. We know that the GEAR Up program is a federally funded program that is set to expire this year, but what we're here to tell you is that this program is integral. It is a cog in Hampton High School. Like so many schools, they can be so segregated. Hampton High School has the IB program. We have a wonderful athletic program. The clubs are outstanding, and sometimes, when you get all these things together, they never talk. You have IB students who only go to class with IB students. You have folks who are focused on other things, but I can tell you, I go into that office of the GEAR Up program, and you see students from every one of those groups. You see the jocks. You see the scholars. You see the struggling students, and you see the students who are thriving, and that's because of the personal touch that they place on the students. You know what's happened, sort of thing about the parents? As the president of PTSA, I can tell you that, hands down, that those personnel make my job easy and enjoyable. There's no such thing about being out of the loop, because they tell me. And that's a one- And that's a wonderful thing. And even though it is a federally funded program and which is granted set to expire, we, as the PTSA, we're here to tell you that you've got to find a way to find money for it, even if the federal funding is not available anymore. It is that integral. We are all that you're seeing tonight, parents of seniors at Hampton High School, seniors. That means we don't have a dog in the hunt, folks. When we leave, the program can go away. But this is how important it is that we think that this needs to continue for those other students who are going to come behind, for those other parents who may need to learn stuff about preparing those students for life after high school. And they start reaching out to the folks who are in middle school. It's easy for us to say it doesn't matter. But you have us here from Hampton High School, parents of seniors, who are telling you that this is very important. This is one of those things, if you have to rack them as far as importance, it's very up there at the very highest. I've spoken to a couple of administrators about this. Thank you for your time. I really thank you for what you're doing about the tough decisions that you're going to have to make. I would say that I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, but that's what we elect you for. And we want you guys to do the right thing, and we're confident that you're going to do the right thing. And that includes the GEAR Up program that is so integral to the Hampton High School and FIBUS. Go Crabbers, though. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maxine Rice. And I show Maxine Rice two times in a row. Are you...
That's correct, but that's me twice. But I'll only speak once, though.
Fair enough.
Hello, everyone. I echo everything that Dan has said. I am first a parent of a senior graduating from Hampton High among several parents with students impacted in some positive way by the function of the GEAR Up office. In my daughter's freshman year, parents knew to the high school were invited to several meetings. You know how that is. One of the meetings that we were invited to was an introduction meeting about the GEAR Up program. And I won't forget this, because it's still, it's very clear in my mind. On my way into the meeting, I walked past one of the administrators of the GEAR Up program. I was a little annoyed, and I did ask her, "Well, why do we have a special program? A special program for increasing the chances of our children's graduating in four years and going to college?" So now, my question, four years later, having seen the GEAR Up program in action, is why are the objectives of a program like GEAR Up the exception and not the norm in our schools, in our high schools? Now, I'm going to put on my Hampton High PTSA Vice President hat. That administrator that I spoke to in the freshman year is, that administrator of the GEAR Up program is being submitted this year for the PTSA Michael Canty Memorial Award because of her unwavering service to our students. So there are a few of us here tonight. As you see, we felt it was very important to show up and express the value of this program. And like Dan said, I hope that that things happen in order to bring the program back, and hopefully, it gets funded. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Our next speaker is Charles Davis, and he'll be followed, I have, oh, Eunice Nettles. But I think I had Eunice Nettles speak already once. Okay, so that's a duplicate as well. All right. So following Mr. Davis will be our final speaker, Grace Lassiter.
Good evening. I made a few comments last year that I thought were pertinent, and I still think that they are today. And what I would like to do, I would like to reiterate these points. I'm speaking on behalf of the Custodians and the HVACs people. My name is Charles Davis. Some of the board members know me as Ronnie. Some other people call me different things, which I will not repeat before you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the privilege of giving me this time to speak before you. Custodians, I am a custodian at the campus in Lee. I am speaking on behalf of many custodians that work for Hampton City Schools. First, I would like to stress that we are an asset to the school system. We come from all walks of life and with different backgrounds. We teach, we mentor, we tutor, we counsel, we help with the security. We participate and support various programs in the city that he or she, at the school that he or she works at. Custodians like teachers provide some of the materials that they need for their trade. Custodians like teachers and other professionals take development classes. I will use myself as an example. I am a retired firefighter. I can tell you if my school can pass a fire inspection. I'm an instructor too, a hazardous level two, plus other skills that I bring from the fire department. Since I have been with Hampton City Schools, I have taught safety and ergonomic classes to custodians from every state as well as some foreign countries. I have taken OSHA, Facilities Management, indoor air quality classes, hazardous material containment classes, as well as other things that would be considered professional development classes. But I do, also, I have two daughters that work for Hampton City Schools. One is attending ODU on the Hampton City Schools program. The other is taking classes on her own. I encouraged both of them to join Hampton City Schools because I thought, and I repeat, I thought it was a great place to work and had security. I have grandkids that also attend schools in Hampton, and they beam when they see me. It would be a sad day if they have to tell their peers that Popeye does not work at Hampton City Schools any longer. Finally, I would like to say that when parents send their children off to school, they want it to be an academically sound place to learn. They also want a place that is safe and clean, and I stress clean. A clean building is conducive to good learning. It also makes its administrators, principals, teachers, and not to say the least, members of the school board, proud. And again, I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And our final speaker is Grace Lassiter.
Good evening, members of the Hampton City School Board and all those other citizens of Hampton. My name is Grace Lassiter, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the GEAR Up program. As my other fellow GEAR Up parents have indicated to you, it's a very good, a very good program that really needs to continue. My daughter, she is a senior, and she's the only child that I have. And although I don't, I mean, I could just as easily just say goodbye, you know, thankful for the benefit that my child has received, I realize how important this program would be to other students coming after her. When I look at the motto, it says, "Every child, every day, whatever it takes," I realize how important it is for the GEAR Up program to continue. I don't want to feel as though, you know, now that my child has received benefits, that, you know, I don't have to worry about those who come after her, because they are just as important. Their education is just as important as my child's education. GEAR Up has been, as a single parent, GEAR Up has been a very important component for the village that my, that I, place that I like to call "The Village" that my child dwells in. As one of the other parents mentioned, GEAR Up has been very instrumental as far as keeping parents informed of what's going on. Not to mention, one of the things, one of the greatest benefits that I believe that my daughter has received and has been like one of my very proudest moments for my daughter's high school education is that she's now enrolled at Thomas Nelson. She's completed all of her high school credits as of December of this past year. And now, she attends Thomas Nelson. And she's, when she graduates with her advanced diploma from Hampton High School, she's going to have enough credits to almost finish her freshman year in college. And to have the staff of GEAR Up to reiterate how important it is to get the right requirements, to be ready for college, how, and, you know, instead of me having to reiterate that information to my daughter, and, you know, it's not just, "Oh, Mom," or, you know, "Okay, can you get off my case?" kind of thing. She's receptive to what they have to say. They have been, GEAR Up staff have been very helpful, more so helpful than the guidance counselors. I mean, and not to, you know, belittle their information or anything that they provide, but GEAR Up has, I just can't emphasize how well that program has been helpful to my daughter as well as to the other students. And I really hope that you'll consider allowing that program to continue, not just at FIBUS High School, but to extend it to all of the schools in the city of Hampton. There are other students, as, other students that could benefit from this program. One of my daughter's Girl Scout troop members, I heard about the struggles that she had to go through in order to get her daughter, who's a Kiketan senior, to get into the Thomas Nelson program, to take classes, you know, instead of, you know, just taking only two classes at high school and sitting around the rest of the day doing nothing or wasting that time. And it was a struggle for her. And I hope that you will consider extending it beyond just the two schools that it's at presently, or just beyond the one school that it's supposed to continue through, and extend it to all of the high schools. It's a very instrumental program, and I want all of our students in the city of Hampton to excel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lassiter. We did have an additional form come in for another speaker this evening. Sherilyn Spiegelberg. I'm sure I did not do justice to that last name, and I apologize. So if you would share with us the correct pronunciation, that would be great. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to say good evening to all the members of the board and superintendent and all the staff of Hampton City School. My name is Sherilyn Christianberg-Josh. So he could never get any weirder. And one of the things, I'm going to go really fast, because I know it's very late. I really wanted to address two issues tonight. And that is, the first one is the cut in the ESL program, English as a Second Language. Me, myself, I am a Second Language speaker, and I've used the ESL program tremendously, and it has done great justice to the students that I know that have used it. For example, most of my children there now, one is at Harvard Law, went from speaking no English to being an accomplished attorney right now, to being the next couple of months. Also have another student that's in the interim program at Norfolk State on a full scholarship. Also have another student that has graduated from the ESL program, and now they're at Purdue University, majoring in their masters, and they've currently left MIT. And that was with all the help of the ESL program, because they were non-speakers of English when they came here. My next issue that I'd like to also address is the cut in the special education. A lot of cuts have been made. For example, that now there's no longer many self-contained classrooms. And that is creating a major hardship upon the principals of the school, because they do have to be in compliance of the law. And not having the children that needs to be in a self-contained setting, they're now in inclusion, that is taken away not only from the teacher being able to teach effectively to the children that are not special education students. Because as we know, behavior is communication. That is the main source of communication. And if a child does not know how to communicate, then he or she will disrupt the class. And a lot of times, they're in the wrong setting. So if you have a classroom of 26 students, and unfortunately, one is in there, and this child really needs to be in an educational setting where it's least restricted for them, and that might be the self-contained classroom, it really do disrupt the other students, where it impacts learning, not only for the special ed student that needs the service and needs the, not only instructional assistant, but the teacher that could go ahead and provide that one-on-one assistance for him and her in a better setting, where it's more, you know, conducive to learning, where they could probably come out and do certain inclusion, certain classes, but not all the classes because of the behavioral situation. And now, what's happening is because of people being told that they had to sign their children out of certain classes, and, you know, they're now in the inclusion setting. You're having where, unfortunately, as seen in Hampton, is having so many disgruntled parents. And I love the city of Hampton. I'm not from here originally, but I consider Hampton to be my home. I consider myself to be a Hamptonian. So I'm not just up here today saying that you should not cut this or you should not do that. I'm proposing that maybe that you could gather and rally with a bunch of citizens that are concerned and parents that are willing to help, and go up to Richmond and petition the legislation to be able to get more grants. For example, Newport News has a shipbuilding. They have Oyster Point. They're bringing in more revenues than we are. We have the town center. We only have a small industrial park. And the Coliseum, the convention center. I do realize that we're not bringing enough revenues in with some of the projects being moved and people from lower-income housing moving into Newport News and York County. They're now increasing their population. And I did some research, and I found that Hampton City School is the only school system here in Virginia that is not really providing self-contained classes for the other self-contained students that really need it because of the budget cuts and restraint. And I do understand that. But why should we not go and rally and get enough money as Fairfax and the other school districts that do have the large industrial business there and so forth? So I'm just begging that maybe before you guys go ahead and cut the programs and cause our city to be in such an uproar, and we probably lose this wonderful school system that I'm in love with, you know, let's rally and try to find funding some other way, but maybe just using the parents, because we're willing to do that. And I want to thank you all very much for listening. I have an accent, so I hope everyone understood. And you have a very nice night. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, does that conclude the forms? Yes. This concludes the public comment portion of our public budget hearing for tonight. And so we will move on now to our superintendent and staff reports, which consists of a work session on the proposed FY15 school board operating budget. Dr. Shiflett, would you want to open that up?
At this point, we have no additional information. We, you know, continue to be hopeful that we'll get some information from the General Assembly regarding our budget. But at this point, we have no updates other than what we provided you earlier.
Are there comments or questions from other board members with regard to the budget as it is proposed? I do think it would be beneficial, because we did have some speakers tonight that had very specific areas of concern. And in particular, I know that HVAC was one that had some areas of concern and perhaps some confusion. I wondered if we could have someone speak to that and give us a little bit more information with regard to some of the concerns that were raised tonight about the outsourcing component of that.
Susie, you want to? I think one of the concerns that I heard was that it might be difficult to get somebody in a timely fashion. And we will still be utilizing a work order system. And the proposed company will be integrated within that work order system. And as a matter of fact, within the contract, it states that we will have at least no more than a four-hour response time to any of our work orders, so...
Although we've been assured that generally, it will be much faster than that. And yes, there will be a work order system that, you know, the work orders can be input into.
I also think there's a misconception that the individuals who are currently with us won't be with us. And the contract, as it's written, includes the current workers being the workers that will still be with us.
Correct.
You know, the people who have the expertise in our system will be working in Hampton City Schools.
Correct, correct. And I think I also heard that, I guess, maybe there's, and maybe I'm interpreting wrong, but people are thinking that the savings we're quoting somehow don't include the cost. But that is a...
but that is a net savings. It's the cost minus the current cost of providing those services in-house. So it is factoring in the outsourced cost. So the increases that people see in those line items is where money has been moved from salary and benefits to a contracted line item to indicate the cost of the outsourced service. And then the net savings reflect the difference between the in-house cost and the outsourced cost.
Okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, I do think that was a.
Yeah.
There were a lot of numbers flying with regard to that.
The millions of dollars there reflect the contracts for these things that we're outsourcing, but the salary lines have also been reduced, salary and benefit lines have also been reduced.
And that's, that's comparing the cost to do business currently with the new cost of doing that business.
Correct. Correct.
And the amount that's listed in the budget is the savings component of that.
What's listed in the budget is, is the cost to take it out of the salary and benefi, or the savings, to save it, take it out of the salary and benefit lines, and then the cost moves down to the contracted lines. When we put the savings in the presentation that was done on the 12th, that was the net difference between the two. So it costs us less to, to put it in the contracted line than it does to keep the salary and benefits up above. But, but yes, it would show a significant increase in the contracted cost, because we're moving where it's being paid for.
Any, any other questions from board members specific to the HVAC, concerns that were raised tonight? And then I think also, in the area of custodial, there was a similar concern, Dr. Shiflett, from, from individuals that have the feeling that they will somehow not be connected with our schools.
Right. All of the people in both HVAC and custodial services will all be offered jobs with the outsourced companies. So our, our expectation is that we'll see the same faces in the same schools.
That their building assignments should, should remain the same.
Correct.
And their connection to their buildings should remain.
Right. The contractors have assured us that all of the people in good standing will be offered jobs.
Ms., Mr. Harper? Is that part of the contract, written contract?
Yes.
Yes.
What is the 90-day caveat?
The 90 days just means that there is a 90-day time period for people to perform. In other words, if there were anybody who were not performing the duties as expected, and the expected duties are no different than what they're doing now, but that there would be a 90-day, sort of a probationary period. And, but the expectation, and both contractors have assured us, they don't expect people to be gone at the end of 90 days. They expect to keep people on. But every contract allows for a period of time to determine that people are fit for the job, appropriate to the job.
We don't make that determination, we as the Hampton City Schools. It's left up to the GCA in this case.
It is.
To make the determination as to who stays and who goes.
I don't think it would be unreasonable for us to have a conversation with them about it before they did anything. But, but yes, it would be their decision.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Mrs. Smith?
There was also a comment that I heard one of the speakers talk about background checks. So.
Everyone will be subject to a background check by both contractors.
And it will be at no cost to them.
Correct.
And there were, there were some questions specific to a, a particular panel, an example that was given with regard to a Siemens panel that had gone out, and the costs related to that, and, and the expected cost was quite a bit more. I think they quoted like $7,000, and then they said, if you were to go with contracted services, it would be more like $30,000 to $40,000. Do we know anything?
The, the contractor has the ability to work on the Siemens products. The, the contract states, in fact, both contracts state really, that if there are any expenses over $1,000 for a, you know, a repair, a significant repair or replacement, it becomes the responsibility of Hampton City Schools, in which case, we are in charge of who does the repair, how we bid the repair. You know, we would, we would be able to find the best price, we would be able to compare pricing, and we would be in control of that. And we would also make the decision whether we agreed that it needed to be either repaired or replaced.
Any other questions from board members on, on HVAC or custodial? And then I know there were also some concerns with respect to special education staffing, and I was hoping perhaps Dr. Shiflett or Dr. Johnson, perhaps both of you could shed a little bit more light on how those particular changes are expected to.
Good evening. Annually, the Special Education Department is required to determine the number of active students in the special education program effective December 1. We have tracked those numbers annually. It's called a December 1 count. And over the last three years or so, we've lost approximately 200 students that were active students with IEPs. We have gone back and looked at our staffing carefully to determine where we can achieve some efficiency without impacting the level of service in order to meet the needs of the students who currently have IEPs. The state staffing is done on a point system, with students with disabilities being counted at various point levels. Students classified as a Level 1 are students who get the majority of their education in the general ed classroom, they're counted as one point. A special education teacher who serves all students or only students at Level 1 can have a roster of 24 students to that one teacher. Students who get some of their instruction in a more restricted resource setting with a special educator, and some of their education in the regular classroom are considered Level 2 students. Special education teachers who serve a combination of Level 1 and Level 2 can have a roster of 20 students to one teacher. When we went back and looked at our staffing, we did not staff at those levels, but those are the staffing levels that are in the regulations for special education. The highest number that I am aware of would be a 1 to 14 ratio in our secondary schools, and lower than that at the elementary level. What we put on paper, really what I put on paper after listening and reviewing the regs, is the layman's way of understanding how teachers are assigned to buildings. Because points don't really mean a lot to people. But given the numbers of students, a teacher who served only students who were getting their support in the general education classroom could have as many as 24 students each. And we are not staffed anywhere near that.
Yes, Mrs. Henry?
Dr. Johnson, would you please also add that while we're not sta, we're staff, staffing at more, less students per roster than the state recommends or requires, but also, please explain that having 14 students on your roster doesn't mean you're in a classroom with 14 students.
That's correct.
That, to people listening would think, oh, I can't give a teacher 20 students, or I can't give a stu, teacher 14 special needs students. That's the number of students for whom they are responsible for the IEP and for monitoring the IEP. They might still be working for, with, in an inclusion class with two or three students at a time in an inclusion class. Or in high school, even in a self-contained class, maybe four or five students at a time, not 14. So the roster numbers are very confusing, and you think, oh, my goodness, that's not reasonable. But the roster is the number of students that you follow the IEP for, and that you check constantly to make sure that IEP is being followed, but that other people, a whole team of people, is providing the services for those students. And no teacher is going to be sitting in a class with 14 special education students.
That, that is correct. And for the instructional assistance and special education requirement is, for a teacher who, in a self-contained environment with eight students, would have an instructional assistant. For our multi-disabled students, or students with multiple disabilities, our special education department has assigned two teachers, two, I mean, not two teachers, but two instructional assistants. And then have assigned instructional assistants, one for every two teachers, and in some instances, it might be a one-for-one. But the regulations only require us to put instructional assistants in self-contained classrooms with eight or more students. And then there may be some students who have one-to-one assistants that are in their IEPs, and we must honor those as well.
I know there was also a comment made by a speaker tonight with regard to the self-contained classes, and intimated that we no longer have any self-contained classes. That's not correct.
That is not correct. And we have self-contained, we have modified self-contained, and then for the vast majority of our students who are required to meet the state standards, they have access to the general curriculum.
And then I think finally, there were a number of speakers with respect to GEAR Up. And Dr. Shiflett?
Yes. Dr. Woods, for the past few years, has been working with both Hampton and Phoebus on the GEAR Up program, and that was a grant-funded program that is, is expiring. It is a wonderful program. And Dr. Woods? Would you? Are you there? Can't see you over there. Do we have another opportunity to apply for additional GEAR Up funding?
Good evening. In a recent meeting with the U.S. Department of Education, they indicated there would be another application. We had anticipated it being released by now, but it has not. So we're unsure of the status at this point. But it is through the U.S. Department of Education. So we would have to reapply.
And what was the funding that we received?
We received a half a million dollars a year for the last six years for that grant.
Any questions?
Any questions from board members with respect to that GEAR Up grant? Thank you, Dr. Woods. Mr. Harper? Oh, okay.
Dr. Johnson, I think there's some confusion and misconception about us releasing a bunch of special ed teachers. Could you, we had a discussion earlier this evening, whatever, that point was basically cleared up for me.
Given the December 1 counts that we've tracked over the past three to four years, and the reduction in the number of students with disabilities that we are currently serving, we've lost approximately 200 students. And the staffing has been adjusted to address that decline in the student enrollment in the program itself.
But given the retirements that we have and resignations, we don't anticipate any special ed teacher losing his or her job.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions regarding the budget from board members? Anything else, Dr. Shiflett?
No, ma'am.
Reports? Thank you. We'll move on to other items for action. We have a VSBA honor roll resolution. It did not make it onto board docs, but our clerk is going to present that orally for us, although I'm seeing something on that. I just added it. Okay.
But I'll read it if you want me to.
That would be great.
Okay. 2014 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of the community, and whereas many local businesses play a cruc, crucial, if I could talk, crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community, and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society and in the future, therefore be it resolved that the Hampton School Board names Centerra Healthcare, Old Point National Bank, and Zell Technologies to the 2014 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them.
So this is on our agenda tonight for action. Is there a motion?
Adam Chair, I move approval of item 5.01, VSBA Business Honor Roll Resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve the VSBA, Virginia School Board Business Honor Roll Resolution. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Ms. Mugler, at some future date, we will be inviting those businesses here as they are added to the honor roll. They have been an integral part of our, our school-to-career efforts, and just all-around excellent business partners. And so I'm really excited about this opportunity to honor them publicly. And I do have one other thing, because I noticed there's some people in the audience, and I'm afraid they're going to rush out before I get to tell all of you this, but do you mind if I?
Absolutely.
Thank you. For the third year in a row, Hampton City Schools has been named Best Community for Music Education in the U.S. from the NAMM Foundation. And I do see that we have at least a couple of music educators still here. So would you mind standing so that we can recognize you? I know that Dan McFarlane was here just a few moments ago. Is he still, did he slip out? Please let him know. We do sincerely appreciate all that you do each and every day for our children. Thank you.
We'll move on to deliberation, which consists of items 6.01 through 6.05, all of which are revisions to school board policies. We'll go through the list individually, since there are only five items, and see if there are any additional comments or deliberations on, on each of those. Beginning with revision to school board policy IKF, Standards of Learning Tests and Graduation Requirements. Are there any comments or questions from board members regarding this policy? Remind everyone, we were briefed on all these policies at our last gathering, a week ago, through the first-read process. If there are no questions or comments on policy IKF, we'll move on to revision of school board policy AE, which is School Division Goals and Objectives. Are there any questions or comments, further deliberation from board members on this policy? Moving on, we come to revision of school board policy AF, which is the Comprehensive Plan. Are there any questions, comments from board members regarding this revision? The next policy revision is that of school board policy BBA, School Board Powers and Duties. Are there any comments or questions from board members regarding this proposed revision? And the final item on our deliberation agenda is for the revision of school board policy BDD, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations. We did receive an email communication from Ms. Reeves regarding a question I had on that. Would you like to comment on that for us, Ms. Reeves?
Only that the question that was raised is, VSBA recommended that we add a provision about any. about any electronic meeting where a school board has been participating electronically, that we have a public comment form available. It's a survey form to be completed. And that is actually not one that we, a form that we create, it's actually created by the Virginia Freedom of Information Council. And that would be available anytime that kind of a situation where you needed someone to participate electronically, we'll have that available at the public meeting.
Any questions?
That's a new provision that the General Assembly added last year, so...
Any questions for Ms. Reeves or any comments, deliberation with regard to policy BDD?
May I ask one favor of all of you? If you have any revisions before action, please let me know by Friday, because I leave earlier than you all for the conference. And I can't make them next week.
Will you be present at our meeting next week?
No. We start, we start that evening.
Okay. So everyone is requested, if you have any revisions on these policies, to please contact our attorney by Friday.
Thank you.
Preferably early in the day. So that concludes our deliberation for tonight. We'll move on to informational items. And that brings us to the announcement of our April 2 meeting, which will be a public hearing on the budget and the adoption of the FY 2014-15 School Board Recommended Budget. And that will, that meeting will be at 6:30 PM here in Jones Magnet Middle School Auditorium. The board, as a reminder, the board has added a regular school board meeting to their schedule for the month of April. That will be on April 23 at 6:30 PM. That's an irregular Wednesday for us. So that will be April 23, and that, that meeting will be a work session, and it will be held at the Rupert Sargent Building at One Franklin Street. Informational items, Dr. Shiflett?
Ms. Mugler, I have no additional information items, but I did want to say a special thanks to all of the folks who've been here this evening and for those who have given us input on our budget deliberations. I do appreciate the input and the feedback that we get, and I thank all of you in attendance
Any informational items from other board members? We'll start to my far left with Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. I just want to share that I was in Richmond this weekend with the Phoebus Robotics Team volunteering, and it was incredible. Some of you might not know, I'm an engineer by profession, and I always knew that they were building robots, and it was cool. And there was problem solving and engineering. But when I actually saw the students that worked there, it was incredible because they had to match at least every hour. And things, robots bumped into each other, and they had to repair things just immediately. They had to be able to problem solve immediately. They had to think ahead, how to design the robot, so if they had to repair it, they could do it quickly. And they had to market, they had to brand their robot. It was just a very incredible experience for me, and the students were brilliant. I mean, they're just top-notch. And the support they have is incredible, too, because the two sponsors are teachers, and they're both engineers as well, and they know their stuff. And they, they work long, long hours, and they have mentors working with them that also work long hours, some great volunteers, and some great families who provide meals to these kids that work all night. Anyway, it was just a wonderful experience. I want to just thank those teacher sponsors and the students and the families and those volunteers. So, thank you.
And they're actually on their way to Philadelphia for some additional competition.
Pittsburgh.
I'm sorry. That's right, Pittsburgh.
And the...
Do you lose?
I'm not from Pennsylvania, but those in Philadelphia are very touchy about Pittsburgh. Any other informational items from board members? There being none, this meeting is adjourned.